Through this. Members of the public may address the school committee for up to three minutes on school and education matters. Public comments shall be directed to the school committee and be brief and not repetitive. The school committee's practice is not to respond or debate with speakers during the public comment period. We are here to listen. The superintendent or his staff will follow up on comments outside of the meeting as appropriate. The committee will not permit profanity or shouting and request that speakers be civil. Complaints or allegations concerning specific employees or students will not be allowed, but will be addressed through established policies and procedures. Before speaking, we encourage speakers to review School Committee Policy AC, which provides the committee, which provides that the committee does not and will not discriminate nor tolerate discrimination against students or employees on the basis of membership in a protected class. Speakers who share comments contrary to this policy will not be allowed to continue. Excuse me. Before starting, please state your name and place of residence. Do we have any public comments tonight? Please come forward.
Hello. I'm Angela Haley, and I live in Bangor. I have a student at Fairmount and a student at 14th Street, and I just wanted to take a minute and touch on two quick things. One, I'd like an opportunity to possibly advocate for childhood anxiety to be added to the student health record that I got when I, my kids started school, came home to fill out. There are a couple pediatric diagnostics listed: depression, eating disorders, and ADHD. And then there's another one called behavioral concerns, and anxiety is not listed on there. I just want to call some attention to that prevalence, the high, high prevalence of pediatric anxiety right now, childhood anxiety, and make sure that I'm advocating for that. My son struggles with anxiety, and I was not overly excited to have to check the other box. You know, it came across as, you know, depression's recognized, and ADHD is really managed and recognized, and schools know how to deal with that. But anxiety wasn't, and it's just, again, so prevalent. The other piece of this that I want to call attention to, if there's any opportunity, I would really encourage all of you for increased education in the schools around childhood anxiety. Stigma exists. I am so lucky that my son goes to 14th Street School and has an exceptional, exceptional principal, Brian Bannon, who is, I mean, exceptional is an understatement, and he, I'm sorry, he has helped my son significantly. But stigma in the school exists. He has a type of anxiety that kind of goes outward. There's a huge fight-or-flight component to pediatric anxiety. The stigma of anxiety is often that kids will go inward, they'll be shy, they'll be withdrawn, they won't want to detach from parents. Then there's the outward type of anxiety, and they get labeled as problems, they get labeled as behavioral problems, and then they get disciplined. They are difficult to manage, and it creates a detachment from their, the person that they should be closest to, which is their teacher, because they're hard, they're hard to manage sometimes when the anxiety is not managed. I don't ask the school committee and the teachers for treatment of anxiety, I ask for education so that they understand what's going on. So, thank you for that.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Other comments?
Hello. My name's Michael Norton, I'm at 83 Elm Street, Unit C, Bangor, Maine. Who won the Super Bowl last year? Does anybody know out there? It was the Rams, right? All right, I think Bangor schools have the opportunity to be a number-one school system in the whole country, and I'll tell you why in a second, just like the Rams won the Super Bowl last year. But first, I want to tell you, I have two older brothers, we all went to really good high school, but I like to think of them and their classes as trailblazers, because when they went, there were riots, and there were people, I've seen, people are still giving, the teachers are still giving the paddle for bad behavior. I've seen welts on the rears of students there. But by the time I got there, it was all clear of that, and much improved, and it was a very good school where all different types of people, you know, interacted together and excelled for academic achievement, and extracurricular, too. It was amazing to, for example, sing on the basketball floor with the basketball team and the crowd, two other guys, the national anthem. Anyway, how to get to number-one Bangor schools, here's my pitch. Get Team 14 of the science teachers. There's 14 science teachers, more or less, I've been told, in the system. Get them together, get them on a team, and take a half a day or a whole day. Get all the students in the auditorium, give each teacher 20 minutes to present their best presentation on the tides of the planet. There's so many unenumerable variables involved, but each teacher is unique, they all have an opportunity to give their best, simplest presentation to the students. Students can vote by either clapping or cheering like that, having fun with it for half a day or a whole day. And then allow me to do it, because I discovered something awesome that's not being taught anywhere. 20 minutes, I either lose, walk away, but every, in my opinion, everyone wins, because they get 14 or 15 different lessons, and they get to walk away, too, with something they didn't learn going in. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, other comments? Nothing online. Okay, so we move on to superintendent's proposals and updates. We have action items, and the first thing we have is the annual approval of the comprehensive emergency plan.
I'm recommending the required annual approval of the comprehensive emergency management plan included in the packet as a public portion of the plan. If you'd like to view the confidential portions of the plan, please contact Lori Mitchell.
Can I get a motion, please?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? And all, all in favor?
Motion passes unanimously, thank you.
Next, we have informational items. We have the post-high school opportunities for the first item.
Yes, thank you, Chair Huston. Director of United Technology Center, Amanda Peterson, school counselors, Dr. Adam Leach and Sharon Pelletier Air, will present to the committee student options and pathways available after graduation. Do you want to come up first? Thank you.
Director Luciano asked for this presentation, so we've compiled the three people that Mr. Tager has referenced. I would like to bring them up here, they all have specific things that they're going to share. Ms. Peterson is going to talk about the UTC technical options, Mr. Leach will talk about the university-level options, and Ms. Pelletier Air will present all the other things that round it out, and I think you'll find it quite informative. So, I could get you three to come up?
So, I'm Amanda Peterson, I'm the director at United Technology Center, which is just up the street here, and we are the largest geographical region here in the state in terms of career and technical education. We serve 39 towns and cities here, Bangor being one of them. We currently have around 760 students that make up our population. All of our programs are housed in our building currently, except for one, which is an exploratory program for ninth and 10th graders. That is the only program right now that we're offering really to ninth and 10th graders, everything else is offered to juniors and seniors. So they start to kind of pick what they'd like to do and the direction they'd like to take for a career path. That can vary anywhere from welding, you know, trade-like careers, we've got carpentry, automotive, there's an agricultural, horticultural program, where it's actually kind of interesting because you get to see the psychology of fish, which is really interesting to see. We've got law enforcement, and then if you go up to our upstairs floor, you can get into the business programs, digital arts and software, commercial video, and culinary arts. There's actually a restaurant tomorrow at 11:45, so if you're free and available, you're more than welcome to stop by. It takes about an hour and a half-ish to get through that, but the students will serve whatever's on the menu, and it goes through just a regular restaurant-type experience. And then we have medical programs. We've got a CNA program and EMT program, and then also a medical assisting program. So, that's sort of ours in a nutshell. We also have a bunch of students that are out in our business community, so they're located all around the Bangor area. We had actually a student today where we went and visited, they're at WABI, and they're producing your noontime news and all of the stuff that's coming behind it. It was pretty incredible to watch a 17-year-old kid, like they've been doing it their whole life. So you really step into the passions of what they'd like to do. So, the value for them is a career, it's a path, it starts to give them certifications, sometimes college credits, there's both in almost all programs. So the pathway for them is either continue the learning or go right directly into the workforce. So, that's typically what happens with most of our students, so.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for giving us this opportunity to be here tonight to speak with you about post-secondary planning. I can speak on behalf of all of the counselors, I can say that post-secondary planning is one of the most enjoyable parts of our job, because we get to help students create their goals, develop their goals, and oftentimes see lots of successes. But when students come to us as ninth graders, we're already thinking ahead, so we're planning ahead to not only graduation, but what is next for them in life. And our goal is to help them to develop a plan that will allow them to be happy, healthy, and safe eventually. We know that we need to meet students where they are, they all are, oops, I'm sorry, they all are at different places. Some students come to us knowing exactly where they want to go and what they want to do in their lives. And for other students, post-secondary planning is really a scary thing for them, they want to avoid it, because they've gone to school their entire lives, and suddenly we're sending them out into the world. So, we have to meet the students where they are and encourage them to, I encourage them to think of post-secondary planning as not something that they're going to be stuck with for the rest of their lives, but actually we're just planning their next step in life.
Before I talk a little bit about two- and four-year colleges, I think it's important to note a little bit about some of the data. We have, we have tracked our post-secondary plans, our future plans, as we call them, and we have data from 1997 to the present. The post-COVID years, the last three years, the two- and four-year college attendance has dropped by 4%. But I would also add that of those three years, none of those three years are outliers in that entire time span. So, we've actually beaten years where they didn't have those disadvantages. The trends since 1997 have remained relatively consistent, 76.3% of our students go to a two- or four-year college, 8.7% choose the military or some other type of higher education, and 14.8% workforce or other undecided options. Those are the three categories that we put them in. So we've remained relatively steady in that, but in that time period, I would also add that our free and reduced lunch rate has doubled. So, while the risk factors and the challenges have increased, the performance has remained, remains steady and very, in very good shape. And that is a testament, as you said, to the teachers and the staff and a lot of the things that everybody does on a daily basis. The two- and four-year colleges, today was main day. I have my hockey jersey on under here still. Today was main day, the University of Maine was at Bangor High School, and they interviewed and did on-the-spot admissions for 56 students, and some that you may know. And the merit-based financial aid that was received by those 56 students totaled $1.257 million. So, when folks ask me, you know, how do I find scholarships? The way you find scholarships is the same way you find success in all of the multiple pathways that we have, and that is through rigor and achievement. When students apply to universities, the single most lucrative scholarship that they can find is a merit-based scholarship. And so their performance at Bangor High School, and I would actually say pre-K to 12 through the entire school system, has chipped in with, with the productivity on this. So, in early college pathways, we've talked before about early college options that can save money, increase attendance rates, increase access to higher education, a lot of things that are going on throughout this, throughout the state and the country to provide more financial access. I'm going to have Sharon talk about gap year and some other things that students are choosing.
Yeah, so I would say a handful of students are choosing to take a gap year. They do this either because they just want to take a break from school for a little while, a lot of them do eventually want to get back to college, but some of them want to think about it a little bit more, some might just want to save some money. But we, we know that college is an investment, a huge investment for a lot of students, and they want to make a smart investment. So I think taking that time sometimes for them is, is, can be wise, but we give them a couple of thoughts to think about when, when planning their gap year. It has to be planned, so they have to have a purpose for it. What are they going to achieve in that gap year? Are they going to travel and/or get more experiences? Are they going to volunteer? Are they going to choose that year to work? We want them to set a deadline. If college is eventually what they want to do, we want them to have that deadline and make that commitment to themselves of when that gap will end, so it doesn't turn into a gap decade. And then we encourage them to apply while in high school so that they have access to all the supports of high school, and then defer enrollment for the next year. So those are some of the considerations when students are thinking about a gap year.
Another option is military service, and our approach to having students pursue the military is the same way as we would have them approach college. In fact, when we have recruiters visit the school, we want them to be treated very much the same way as a college admissions representative. The military, like, like colleges, if you're picking a major, you're not just picking a college, you're picking a major, you're picking something that is going to be a stepping stone to your career. So when we approach military options, we look at what their, what their occupation will be when they're in, in the service. And again, going back to rigor and achievement in their academic courses in high school, still will serve them well. We also look for connections to higher education. Careers in the military have a wide variety of options, just like university, universities have a wide variety of options. We want to make sure that they understand and explore all of those options, from going into the military first, and to being, so that an education can be paid for, but also getting an education first to maybe enter the service and at a higher rank, we're doing them concurrently. There, there are options for all of that. So the, the military and higher education options really get back to the core of what Bangor High School does really, really well, and that is provide those, those rigorous opportunities and have students try to achieve at the highest level that they can.
And then entering the workforce is really a viable option for a lot of students these days. Some of them just have a job, are great at it, and want to continue with that, and that's, that's a good option for a lot of students. But more and more often, we're seeing apprenticeship opportunities for students. I'm sure you've seen the signs around Bangor saying free CNA training. So a lot of times, there are opportunities for students to go directly into the workforce, work for someone and get some paid, some paid training as well. We've had people from the construction field come in and speak with some of our students about apprenticeship opportunities. And in fact, tomorrow, Adam and I are meeting with representatives from the Maine Apprenticeship Program to try to strengthen some of those connections for students to make that leap right into the workforce and get some of that training. Oh, it's still my turn. Okay, sorry. We didn't, we didn't practice this ahead of time, so. So as you hear, there are many different options for our students, and every student is different, so the planning for them has to be really individualized. So we have to, so in terms of developing that plan for each one of them, it includes having that individual meeting for students each year. We start with, we kind of got, COVID kind of got in the way of those individual meetings for students each year, but we're really committed to continuing that. In freshman year, the focus will be a lot different than meeting with students in senior year, where we're really trying to hone in on their plan. But post-secondary planning also involves a lot of evaluation of yourself, of your values, of your interests, and where you want to go. And so over the years, in guidance, we have done these things, we've done assessments with students to help them with interest inventories. But managing the data of all of that has always been difficult, and managing it in a way that would be available to all stakeholders was very difficult. But thankfully now, we've introduced Zello, which is an online platform that is, has to do with post-secondary planning. So we've just introduced that this year. What I see it as is an online file for each student to do some of these interest inventories, to do some of this self-evaluation, but also do some exploration that is available to not only the students and teachers, but also the counselors and the parents, so that we can have really deep, good discussions about what their post-secondary plan is.
And the last thing I, that we wanted to mention is kind of the what we do and the what we've learned through the experience of the last three years of going through the, the COVID years. I would say first, too, that the Guidance Department at Bangor High School has 108 years of experience in education. Sadly, I am the plurality, but we, we do recognize that it's a wonderful team to work with, because we come from a lot of different walks of life. We have a lot of value in our own lived experience as parents, as coaches, teachers, in the military, as well as careers in industry. And so having a team of folks like we have is extremely valuable to all of us. We are grounded in standards, we are currently working on improving and developing our comprehensive plan, comprehensive school counseling plan that, that is way overdue to be, to be revised. And so we're working on that. We've, we've learned about the importance of face-to-face. I was listening to people talk the other day about concern over declining test scores, not just at our school, but nationally and globally, and the big takeaway for, for us that in, in that is that what we do is extremely valuable. So the, the one-to-one experience, having people face-to-face, real, it is a human job, it's a human experience, and so that, that is incredibly valuable. By state statute, we should be spending 80% of our school counselor time in direct service to students. We haven't yet attained that, but we're hoping that things like Zello that Sharon mentioned will help us to spend less time doing things like collecting data and a lot more time using data to help the students. We've also, we've learned things such as our calendar, in a calendar service, Calendly, some of you may have used Calendly to schedule appointments with us, makes it incredibly easy and fast for people to have access to us to schedule appointments, whether it's in-person or via Google Meet. We've benefited from accessing students through the advisory program to be able to deliver some of our social-emotional content and things like that, and look forward to that, being able to continue to develop, as well as newsletters that Sharon has done a great job with, to be able to improve the communication and, and connectivity with, not just with the students, but with families, with the community, with employers, with college representatives, and so on and so forth. I would also say that we, I look forward to our next College and Career Day, which is March 15th. It was a big hit before COVID, we got it back on its feet last year, and we look to really expand it this year, and we want to add wellness to that, so a college, career, and wellness fair that we hope to have everybody, not just in the junior class, but everybody probably from middle schools on up, but also use that as a way to promote the things that we do in our school to some of the surrounding communities as well, and trying to bring all of that together in our future planning, which is really at the core of what, that's the most important thing that we do. When we keep our eye on future planning, all of those other things have to fit and fall into place to serve that, that purpose. So that's it. Questions for us and Amanda?
Thank you, all three of you, thank you so much for the great presentation. Member Sorg?
This is for Director Peterson. Could you expand a little bit on the ninth and 10th exploratory program going on at Orno?
Thank you. So it's a, it's a pilot program that we just recently started. They have a shop space that was being utilized as storage with COVID lunch containers, so they were like, hey, we really should revitalize this. The other piece that's really happened with us, too, I think in a, in a lot of schools is that there's a big push for this hands-on learning, as well as connecting it to their academics, and so looking at their opportunity, we said, let's give it a try. So, they opened it up to the 10th graders first, and they filled the class with just 10th graders because of the interests, and I think it's because of the style of learning. It picks up four programs from our school based on the expertise of the instructor that we hire, so it kind of, you know, is based off in that, as, as well as some of the, you know, interests the students are having, so we try to tailor it to fit both. It's unique because it partners us with your school, you know, we get to be part of your community, you know, we're not an outlier, you know, and I think that's the biggest, you know, benefit that I see, because our instructor is now working in that population, developing relationships, starting to figure out, you know, you know, does a student fit the next piece? The other great part is, is that if they are developing foundational skills at a younger age, you can get them out maybe into some of those work-based learning programs that we have, so that they can go out their senior year and work for the WABIs or the Darlings or the Quirks, or we've got some that are at Northern Light and PCHC, you know, they're all around the community doing those things as their senior year, so makes it really more valuable in connecting them to the next path, so.
Other questions or comments? Member Mundell?
Yeah, just to follow, follow on to that, so could you say a little bit about what the structure is, like how, how many hours they go?
So typically, our students are in our school for 350 hours. It's about eight and a half weeks' worth of training. For the ninth and 10th grade program, it's half the time, so it's about 175 hours or semester-based, half-day kind of program. It's all, can be structured in a variety of ways. There's a few other schools, such as ours, across the state that have this in all of their sending high schools. Rockland area being one of them down in the midcoast, it's something that they've, it's been a great feeder for their school, as well as developing, you know, relationships within their sending high schools, so.
Okay, and so we bus our kids out there, is that how it works for?
So this program right now is just a pilot with Old Town, so it's just Old Town students there.
Okay, so we're not participating yet?
We're, we're not there yet. The goal is, is that we'll hopefully have all of these programs built out in our, all seven of our sending schools. So, our budget is separate in the way that it's structured, and so where we built it out as a pilot, that was the thought, is we open up to ninth and 10th. But there's a lot of talk about satellite programs all over this community, because our building is busting at the seams. We really are reaching capacity, and so how do we source, you know, and meet the needs of all students, not just ninth and 10th graders, but the 11th and 12th graders that were not able to get into our building? And what are the industries that we're not meeting? You know, there's early childhood education, there's, you know, a strong desire for cosmetology and those pieces, you know, so you start to try to think about how do we help students start to connect to their passions a little bit sooner? But yeah, it's on the, it's on the agendas, we're started the process. When we develop new programs, we have to submit in certain timeframes and all of that, so we're working on those pieces.
Okay, great. So, I know, I know, Member Sorg and I have brought this up before, but is there any way we can get some instruction in the high schools for the kids who don't want to make the time commitment to go to UTC or to this pilot program? You know, like I would love my kids to know how to sew or like hammer a nail into a wall, all that stuff?
Yeah, we're working on some of those unique kinds of things, because we're, you know, we're creating some experts, not complete experts, by the way, but they're in your schools already, so that they're starting to have some of those experiences. Are there ways that we can build in an Experience Week or something like that? So, there's things out there that we're trying to get creative with and build it into their, their already busy schedules, but.
That sounds cool, an Experience Week, just to give kids a taste of.
Our building's underutilized after 2:00 PM. That's another. That's another piece that we're looking at. You know, is there ways that we can bring in some students after 2:00 PM? You know, before our adult education starts? So, that's another opportunity. And maybe some summer camps for middle school kids. So, there's a lot of stuff that's on the, kind of on the burner right now that we're trying to get going.
Well, you do great work, so thank you.
Member Sorg?
Stay right there. Another question for you. Can you explain to us the bridge or gap program that you have with Eastern Maine Community College and some of the other community schools?
Sure, so, part of our, one of the things that's, it's kind of a, all of our programs have to have third-party certifications and then also a dual enrollment course. So, basically, what that means is that we have to align with a post-secondary opportunity, and we also have to align with the workforce. So, all programs have this, some have it in greater value than others. So, for our business program, those students can go and get either a one-year certificate from Eastern Maine Community College, and some of them are even earning their associate's degrees. I think a few years ago, you had a bunch of Bangor students that had earned associate's degrees and also that one-year certificate. They can do that in automotive, they can do that in digital arts and software, and then also our computer science program. We've got a direct pathway for nursing now. So, our CNAs, students can go directly into Eastern Maine's program. There's some requirements that they have to meet, so there's some GPA pieces. But the hospital will also hire them while they're learning. So, it creates a really nice pathway for them. You know, that's the, really the biggest connection. But Hassan, UMaine, Eastern Maine, Northern Maine Community College, Southern Maine Community College, Thomas College, is some of the schools that we work with in far as credits. The students get those transcripts when we're done. So, that's the other great piece that they can transfer.
So, they can have like almost one-year college or maybe, as you said, an associate's degree done by the time they graduate from high school?
Yeah, we're seeing some of our students graduate a four-year degree in college by the time that they're 20 years old. You know, so the economic impact that that makes in their lives is pretty significant.
One other question I have. Who is funding this pilot program for Orno?
DOE. So, our budget is all, well, it all comes from the state. It's all state funding. We don't have a local base at this point of time. So, all of that comes from EPS and goes into that. And so, we build it out on a three-year average of numbers. And so, they give us three years to basically make the program work. And then, after that, then if EPS changes or any of that stuff, then we'll have to take that on locally.
Because it used to be local funded?
It used to be local.
And just, I think, was it four or five years ago, it went to EPS?
Yes, yep. So, it's all part of that. As long as we plan, we can get the funding pieces for it. So, we have to work on, you know, rooms, numbers, schedule pieces, all those things to coordinate that. And applications have to be in by June. So, that's typically, and then it comes, not that fall, but the following fall.
Okay, I do have another question, too. Registration to get into, start junior year in high, it's through a program at UTC. Is it, you said you've gone to online now?
So, we have an online app. We shifted that this past year just because we had a number of students. And it was also helpful for us in seeing, you know, who was applying and how do we support that and communicate with the school counselors? Because sometimes you have to make sure that it's an appropriate placement in some programs, just because of the level of work, you know? So, we want the student to be successful in all areas. So, it develops that line of communication with our staff at UTC as well as all of our schools that participate at our school, so.
Did that work fairly well?
It did. It was, it was a great resource. You know, we have a few bugs to work out, but we have waitlists in a lot of programs. So, the student also has a piece in it where they have to kind of say why they want to be there, which is really helpful, you know, in determining that piece. It kind of, especially when you got, we had 80 students that wanted welding. We have 40 slots, you know? So, we had to have, find other solutions for those 40 students. And for the most part, we can do that by those interest surveys that they were talking about and the conversations that they're having with our school counselors. And, you know, we get tidbits of information in an essay. We can share that stuff.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other comments or questions? All right, thank you again.
Thank you.
Next, we have October 1 count, Superintendent Tager.
Yes, Chair Hassan, I will update you on the October 1, 2022 count. It's in your packet, so I'm just going to touch on a couple of items. Our enrollment is staying stable. In April of 2022, we had 3,457 students. We now have 3,459, so that's pretty stable. Also, the three things that I would want to point to your attention, socioeconomic status, the students are on free and reduced lunch. Status, we have increased by 1.51%. Multilingual students have increased by 34.04%. And pre-K counts have increased by 15.97%. So, those are the notable things.
Thank you. Next, we have report of reassignments for school year 2022, 2023.
Thank you. I'm reporting the following reassignments. Sam Mooreing from Assistant Principal at James F. Doughty School to Interim Principal at James F. Doughty School. And Sam is present in the back. If Sam, if you'll just raise your hand so they can all see who you are in case they don't know. And I want you to be able to meet the school committee afterward. Just come up and say hi. Timothy Reed from Assistant Principal at Bangor High School to Interim Assistant Principal at James F. Doughty School. Daryl Loring from IEP Compliance Coordinator Districtwide to Interim Assistant Principal at Bangor High School. Daryl is also present. If you would raise your hand, Daryl. Thank you to you both.
Thank you. So, we move to business action items. The first action item is minutes for the regular meeting of October 13th, 2022.
I'm recommending approval of the draft minutes of the October 13th, 2022 Regular School Committee Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have personnel, and we have extra duty assignments.
I'm recommending committee approval of the following extra duty assignments for the school year 2022, 2023. Guy Perone, first-year, .5 Assistant Boys varsity ice hockey, Bangor High School. Derek Fornier, first-year, .5 Assistant Boys varsity ice hockey, Bangor High School.
Can I get a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
And then, we have several second reading of policies. Could we take them all together?
Sure.
Okay, so we have revised policy AC, non-discrimination and affirmative action. We have revised policy BCA, organizational meeting. We have revised policy BCE, subcommittees. Revised policy BDDH, public participation at school committee meetings. Revised policy GCBDA, family and medical leave. We have revised policy GCCA, recruiting and hiring of administrative staff. And we have revised policy IMDC, cultural and religious holidays.
I'm recommending second reading of revised policies. Revised policy AC, non-discrimination and affirmative action. Revised policy BCA, organizational meeting. Revised policy BCE, subcommittees. Revised policy BDDH, public participation at school committee meetings. Revised policy GCBDA, family and medical leave. Revised policy GCCA, recruiting and hiring of administrative staff. Revised policy IMDC, cultural and religious holidays.
Motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or discussion? Member Mandell?
Yeah, I had a question about policy BCE on subcommittees. It looks like we are going to start up a policy subcommittee. So, I was wondering if either Member Hassanin or Superintendent Tager could say a little bit about what that is going to look like? I saw that it's either one or two members, and it seems like a huge task for one or two people. So, I'm just wondering about the makeup and the idea.
I'm going to bring up the expert if Kathy would come up.
Put you on the spot.
So, the policy committee for school committee often is that you preview them before they come to the actual committee. You can only have two, because if you have more than two, then you would be having a school committee meeting. So, in order for it to be a subcommittee, it needs to be the two. The purpose of having that is that we review the changes. So, lots of times, laws come down through, and policies have to be adapted to meet the laws. Or they may have to have some changes based upon the needs of the school department. And this would just be kind of like an "I" before, that comes before the committee. And we'd have it all prepared. There'd be, it wouldn't be like we'd just be pulling things off from, there'd be a pragmatic and systematic approach to the policies that we would be looking at.
Okay, okay. So, it's sort of just an in-between phase?
Yes.
Between the policy coming down from the state or based on the needs that you all see in the department and then coming to school committee? So, it's kind of?
Correct. So, like, you've done all these readings, and they've been because of, is it because of the need, or have there been the law changes so that we've had to adapt them? And so, you'd be able to have those discussions about why the change is being made, what the purpose of that change was? And then, you would be able to answer the questions instead of having me come up here?
Okay, great. Anything to make your job easier?
Yeah.
So, that was a great review. So, Dr. Harris Medberg would be on that committee with a couple of people that are up here on the dais, and they would be able to give a preview to the committee before you vote.
And so, those two committee members will be chosen at the reorganizational meeting?
Correct.
Correct. Okay, so those who are interested. Any other questions? Discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have donations and member sectors. Your final hurrah.
To Down East School from Kids in Need Foundation, backpacks and school supplies having a total dollar value of $6,000. To Down East School from Realty of Maine, a cash donation for snacks having a total dollar value of $200. To Down East School from Rock Church, gift bags for teachers having a total dollar value of $300. To Down East School from Roger and Shawna Oliver Darlings, winter coats for students having a total value, total dolu, dot, blah, 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 dollar value of $1,600. To 14th Street School from the Bangor Elks Lodge 244, dictionaries for grade-three students having a total dollar value of $114. To James F. Doughty School from Realty of Maine, a cash donation for hats, mittens, and/or snacks having a total dollar value of $200. To Bangor Regional Program from Bangor Savings Bank, peanut butter and jelly having a total dollar value of $200. To Bangor Regional Program from Lamy Wellingham, winter boots for students having a total dollar value of $500. To Bangor Regional Program from Cross Point Church, backpacks and school supplies having a total dollar value of $500. To Bangor School Department from the Briar Patch, LeBron Graham, workbooks having a total dollar value of $210. And I submit all of these with the utmost gratitude and thank you on behalf of all of the children and the teachers and the students.
Thank you so much. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Any discussion, questions? All in favor?
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And we don't have any introduction items, so let's move to committee updates. Any comments or questions from the committee? Member?
Thank you. I just wanted to also take a moment to recognize member sectors. Six years is no small amount of time to give your time and energy and talents to something. And I think, in particular, the last three years, I am sure there's never been a more eventful period of time in the history of the Bangor School Department. And you were among this group and a leader of this group. And from somebody who was on the outside prior to this year, I always appreciated and respected and admired your work here. And I'm going to miss you as a member of this group. I know you'll still be very active in the community. I have encouraged you and will encourage you again to consider elected service in some capacity, possibly on the city side of things or somewhere else, because you have a lot, a lot to give, and you've always carried yourself with nothing but integrity and positivity. So, congratulations. Hope it feels good to be departing us in some ways, but I think we'll all certainly miss you. And I wanted to continue, if I may.
Right ahead.
I wanted to also recognize our chair on the successful completion of one year in your leadership role and the continuation of your term. You are also celebrating the culmination of your first term here. And although we're happy, I think all of us can say that, that you're continuing, it's also notable that you're completing a term here. So, congratulations to you, and thank you. I know from experience, it's hard to do this when you have kids running around and many constraints on your time and energy. So, thank you for all the energy and skill and insight you give to this as well.
Thank you. Very kind of you. Other comments? Member sectors?
So, actually, I have a question. And so, I went to a chamber event recently, and they were talking about some of the new refugees that are going to be coming to the Bangor, well, that are going to be coming to the area. And they had already found housing, but there's something like 10 children coming. And what I'm curious about is, because of some of the policies that we're seeing nationwide, that there is a possibility that there could be many more, you know, families coming to the area. And I understand that we do a really good job with English as a second language, as does a few other area schools. Has there been any discussion ever of if something like this happens, of pooling our resources and doing something along the lines of? And I realize that it's probably ridiculously complicated for so many reasons, but something like the UTC model where, you know, if, it just, I've seen some children, because my son was a mentor of a child who was not in the Bangor school system, who did not advance as quickly in his language as he probably would have if he had been in the school. So, I was just wondering if that's conversations about that? Or if, and you're probably the one that, I should be actually asking these things, too, when I think about this.
Multiple conversations going on. And yes, if Christie wants to come up, but you're exactly right on the number of students. We're expecting possibly some more. The students are coming from Syria, from what I understand, and they'll be going to Mary Snow Fruit and William S. Cohen School. So, we're getting ready for them. And you've been in a series of meetings. Is there anything you'd like to maybe add? You work with Catholic charities?
Yeah, I do, on a bi-weekly basis. We're well aware of the family of nine arriving mid-November. Another family possibly arriving in mid-November, end of November, but they don't have housing secured in the Bangor area yet. I did work with area school districts to let them know that if they can't find housing in Bangor, they'd be going to outlying towns so that they would be prepared also. We have not, this year, talked about pooling resources, but we have done that in the past. Our EL teacher at one point was teaching for us in Bangor and in Brewer because they had a need. So, if that's a need, we can, you know, work regionally to do that. Yeah. Okay?
We also added a multilingual teacher this year, and we're looking at our numbers now. So, that may be another adjustment that we're considering.
Yep.
I'm really hopeful to maybe expand on the teachers as well as needed. And Superintendent Tager and I have discussed that a little bit, too.
Yeah, monitoring the numbers. I just had a conversation with April Perkins from the Maine Department of Education in regards to numbers and the services necessary. We're also working with Catholic charities to do some staff training and community training.
And what's really exciting is that there are so many different organizations that are super excited and all engaged. The Maine Multicultural Center is part of this work as well. And so, in Good Shepherd Food Bank, we've spoken about this as well. So, everybody is really jumping on board, and it's exciting.
Yeah, the bi-weekly meeting with Catholic charities, it involves all of those agencies plus the city. And it's every two weeks, and we just talk about what needs to come next. It includes public health, so a well-thought-out, developed plan for those families arriving. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Comments? Okay, so we'll move on to committee appointments. Committee, sorry, representatives' reports. I don't believe we have anything yet. Nothing? Okay. And we will kick-start the DEI committee and other committees soon once we start the reorganizational meeting and get all the committee members in place. Member Sada, do you have any student committee updates?
Good evening, everyone. So, the fall sports season is coming to an end. A lot of teams have ended their season or are coming into their semifinals and quarterfinals. The boys soccer team had their quarterfinals game tonight, I think. I haven't heard anything about that, though. And then, the girls soccer team is having their semifinal game. And then the girls soccer team is having their semifinal game on Saturday. Also, the girls cross-country team last weekend was at the Northern Maine Regionals in Belfast, and they did exceptionally well. There were definitely a lot of runners in the top scores and Bangor was the top school at the meet. So they, they and the boys cross-country team qualify for the state's competition coming up. And in addition, I would like to mention that if we recall, last year, students from various clubs had a multi-club fundraiser for Ukraine. And this year, students are starting that up again, not for Ukraine this time, but for a different project that will help raise money for toys for kids who are at Northern Light. It's called the Jared Box Project. So right now, the plan is to have a district-wide jean day for teachers to pay money as a donation so that they can wear jeans on a certain day. And students, club leaders will be hosting a bake sale and a movie night next, or yes, next week, two weeks, sometime at the beginning of November. It's still being organized, but there will be just the opportunity for students to engage with, you know, donating the money and having, like, across the clubs, having an opportunity to build like a community project and really make an impact in the community. There will also be an advisory lesson planned for that so that everyone in the school can participate. So it's not just like if you can't make it to the movie night, you're not going to be able to do something with this. So it's really a great example of taking action. And on behalf of the student body, I'd also like to thank member Sectors for her service. We really appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you so much. And as a committee, we also would like to thank you for, I think you're finishing up one year and going on to your second year. And we were all just saying how wonderful you've been, such a wonderful addition to our committee and such wonderful updates. So thank you for being with us. And moving on to informational items, we have several important dates. So we will not meet again until the next, the next time will be the reorganizational meeting, which will be Monday, November 14, 2022, 11:00 AM, Council Chambers. Wednesday, November 16, 2022, we'll have our board training workshop, 5:30 PM, Council Chambers. Wednesday, November 16, 2022, we'll have a regular meeting, 7:00 PM, here in Council Chambers. And then Wednesday, November 30, 2022, regular meeting, 7:00 PM, Council Chambers. And final, final opportunity for questions and/or comments from the committee. Member Luciano.
I just wanted to give a quick update. I missed it earlier, sorry, about the MSBA Delegate Assembly that took place over this past weekend. Tim Saret was elected to be the primary and was not able to attend, so I got to go in and take care of that for him. That was very interesting. It was about 90 delegates, representatives voting on a series of policies from the MSBA, the Maine School Board Association, for those who have trouble with acronyms like I do. It was very interesting. I was, it was, you, you had to have two devices, number one, just quick, quick fun note there. You had to have a phone and a laptop. If you didn't have either one, it could have been challenging. And, you know, that was something I hadn't planned for, but thankfully, very agile that way. But overall, it was a really interesting approach. It was over three hours. It was very lively. There was a lot of public comment that took place. And I would like to actually just take a minute and say thank you to superintendent Tager for being a good leader.
Thank you.
A noble leader, a kind leader, a functional leader. I wish we had more of those out there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, member Luciano. And it was kind of last minute where we said, please do it, Sarah, and she jumped right in. So thank you. We appreciate it. Other comments? Yes, member Sectors.
All right, this is my final chance. Thank you all very, very much. It has been such an honor and a privilege to work with every single one of you. And I know I joke around a lot, and I know I'm, I'm going to miss you all, and I'm going to miss this role, but I know that our schools and our kids are just in such incredible hands. And thank you all very, very much for that. So, thank you.
Okay, so adjournment. Can I get a motion, please? So moved. Second. All in favor?